With the most recent election of three members of the Board of Education, two incumbent board members were reelected to their positions. Ms. Shebra Evans and Ms. Rebecca Smandrowski were reelected to new four-year terms, and a new board member was elected, Ms. Lynn Harris. Ms. Harris was elected to serve her first term on the Board. Ms. Jeanette Dixon completed her four-year term and did not seek reelection. Current board members offer their congratulations to Ms. Dixon on her tenure, while offering a summation of their collective accomplishments and aspirations for the new year.
It's a pleasure to be at this swearing-in ceremony for my successor on the Board of Education, Ms. Lynn Harris. Lynn, congratulations on your election to the Board. I'm so pleased that you will be succeeding me on December 1st. And I want to just say how grateful I am, and I know the voters of Montgomery County are for the sacrifice that you are making to serve on the Board. You will be giving up your teaching position in the Edison Center to take on this work. We've had a great opportunity to transition, and I think you will no doubt hit the ground running on December 3rd at your first Board meeting. If I could give you one piece of advice in terms of my four years of service, it is that you need five of eight votes to get anything done on the Board. So I would urge you to talk to your colleagues in small groups, call them on the telephone, but that collaboration and talking with them is really so essential. Good luck, and once again, thank you for your willingness to serve the students, staff, parents, and the Montgomery County School community. I would also like to congratulate President Shebra Evans and Rebecca Smandrowski on their reelection to the Board of Education. Your reelection was really well-deserved. And Shebra, I would just like to first share with you what I admire about you. I admire what a good person you are, who always focuses on the best in people and programs. I admire that you facilitated our meetings on Zoom without complaint. You were the perfect board member to do this. I admire your tireless energy and the great job that you have done representing the Board during the last two years. You only turned down a request to meet if you had a conflict, but you attended everything. And I admire your efforts to bring board members together and to facilitate compromise when necessary. But what I admire most about you is what a great wife you are to Lawrence and a great mother you are to Sydney and Sierra, and that you listen not only to them, but you listen to your colleagues as well. I will truly miss you, and I will be keeping track of how you are doing on the Board. So watch out for those text messages. And to Rebecca, I have admired your support of our students who have special needs and how you have championed supporting the mental health of our students. You have always been, in my estimation, the most compassionate member of the Board, especially in close sessions. Organizations need to have policies, but when the policy comes in conflict with what is best for our students, I agree that we should do what is best for the individual student. I will also miss, as I've recently found out, what a good cook and baker you are. So I look forward to seeing you again soon and maybe getting some of those Christmas cookies that you made last year again this year. And at this time, I would like to transition and say a few words about what I appreciate about each of my colleagues on the Board of Education. Pat, I want you to know how much I admire your longevity of service on the Board of Education. You know, as I've told you before, I think you deserve a medal for sitting through all of our meetings, answering all of the emails, and the fact that you really are without peer in being prepared for our Board meetings. It's so wonderful to know that you have read all of the materials that we are sent and that you are prepared to represent our students. I also want to thank you too for the great conversations we've had about caring for elderly parents and to let you know that you really are the one who sparked my love of Ireland. When you went on a trip to Ireland, you brought back a calendar, and as a result of that, I determined that I would visit Ireland the next year. And I absolutely love Ireland and cannot wait to go back to visit again, especially the Wild Atlantic Way on the western part of the country. And I will miss your stories about Melissa and Jenny and to find out what Rick has been doing, and of course, stories about your beloved grandchildren, Brooke and William. I will miss you, and I hope whenever it is that you retire from the Board, you will ensure that I am invited to come to those celebrations. And Judy, I have admired your determination to meet your responsibilities as a board member despite having to deal with mobility issues. Despite that, before the pandemic, I think you were the one board member who attended everything you were invited to, and I don't know how you did that. You have been a champion for the achievement of African-American and Latino students. As one of the longest-serving board members and the longest-serving African-American board member, I realize I have stood on your shoulders, and I want to thank you for that. I will miss the Toblerone chocolates you put on our mailbox or put in our mailbox for Christmas every year. And I will miss the opportunity of talking with you about the history of our contributions in Montgomery County. God bless you, and I hope to see you again soon. And also, in order right after Judy, I would like to recognize, I think in order of seniority, Carla. And I would just say to Carla that I have admired your willingness to serve on the Board while working full-time at Montgomery College. And I have admired your push for MCPS to be transparent and improve communication and outreach to families whose first language is not English. I admire that you have not forgotten your roots in Guatemala and would urge you to continue to share that part of your personal heritage, especially when the pandemic is over, with board members and the public at large. I look to you to carry the banner in asking questions about the work of our ESOL Commission. And Brenda, I have admired your sense of humor and how you make me laugh. And the truth can now be told that I'm leaving. You are my favorite colleague on the Board. I feel a special connection to you because we both didn't have the most auspicious start in life, but we both ended up doing okay. You know who you are and do what you think is best on behalf of our students. I get a kick out of when you are more blunt than I am. I will miss that. I admire your devotion to your grandson, Christian, and how you have been assisting him. He is a first grader in MCPS in his signing in for his classes and doing his schoolwork. And I will always treasure the advice you have given me on caring for my mother. It has really worked. Nick, I feel, Nick, I owe you lunch. And I'm so sad that I have not had the opportunity, because of the pandemic, to take you out to lunch, have the opportunity to sit down with you and talk about your hopes and goals for your service on the Board. But I have appreciated the questions you have asked. And I was delighted to hear at our November 10th meeting how you have given the Human Resources Office Advisory Committee your thoughts about reimagining that office. I will look forward to the rest of the school year on the Board and seeing how you fare. And I do also appreciate your advocacy on behalf of students in offering the resolution in September for the Policy Committee to take a look at giving excuse to absences for students for mental health issues. I think that that work will nicely complement the Be Well 365 Initiative. And so I also owe you a book, which I will mail to you at your home, and I hope that you have enjoyed it. And finally, and last but not least, Dr. Smith, I wanted to share with you, kind of turn the tables a little bit, and share the things I admire about you. I admire your willingness to take on what is, in many respects, a thankless job. I have admired how hard you have worked at being our superintendent and that you work at this really 24/7. And you did that when you came with staff who were already in place. And I admire your patience with them, and I admire that you have taken on this job really without complaints. I have not heard you really complain about this job. I think you do love it and appreciate that. I admire your ability to explain why you are doing whatever it is you are doing so that anybody can understand it. I admire your patience in answering questions from the Board and never making us feel that questions we have asked are stupid, even if they are. I admire your organizational skills and the stability you have provided for MCPS. And I've admired this especially during this COVID pandemic. I think certainly in the spring, you provided a roadmap with really very little notice to the end of the school year and have planned meticulously for the opening of school in August, virtually, and then hopefully the opening that will be able to take place in February. I admire that you are the only superintendent I know of in the state of Maryland that does a monthly press conference to answer questions from the press. I admire your willingness to do all of those budget forms with Councilmember Rice for the last four years. I think, I think I counted about five one year. I thought that was a lot, but I certainly admire your willingness to do that. I admire your devotion to your family, your love of your wife and five children, two of whom you adopted, and your love of your grandchildren, and especially your youngest grandchild, who faces some surgeries for heart-related issues. You are a good man, and they are so lucky to call you husband, father, and grandfather. And I also want to just thank you for your service and to let you know that if there is anything that I can ever do for you in the future, I would be happy to do so. And so finally, I just want to say I have enjoyed the privilege of serving on the Board of Education. I tried to share what occurred during my service in my written Leaving Out Report. And someone suggested that all board members should have to do that when they leave, when they leave MCPS. I received this lovely Irish verse from Jeremiah Floy, who succeeded Odessa Shannon of the Board and served from 1984 to 1986 in response to the Leaving Out Report. And I would like to close with it and say to you all, "May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind be always at your back. May the sun shine warm upon your face and the rains fall soft upon your fields. And until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of His hand." Thank you.
Thank you so much to everyone who brought me to this place of being sworn in as a member of the Montgomery County Board of Education. I have to thank so many who got me to a place of feeling, first of all, that I was prepared to run for office and to serve in this capacity. And that goes back to my engagement in my first PTA when my son started kindergarten in 2008 at Highland View Elementary School and the warm and welcoming atmosphere I found there, led by Ann Ardarian, the principal, who made it very, very clear that she not only thought parent and family engagement in our school was a nice thing to have, but that she thought it was an essential thing to have. And she made my engagement and work as a PTA volunteer something that I felt was important and something that it made me feel that I had something to bring to the school that the school itself valued. And then when I moved forward to middle school, to Silver Spring International Middle School, Karen Bryant, the principal there, also made me feel that I was very much a part of that school and had something to share. And as I served in various leadership roles in the PTA and then in the countywide PTA, I learned so much about this very large school system, all 208 schools, this large county, 160,000-plus students, 24,000-plus staff. And that was my primary schooling ground for learning about the school system and feeling that I understood it well enough to conceive of running for the Board of Education. The other thing that I think has prepared me so well to serve is being a teacher in the school system for the past four and a half years. And I have to give a shout out to my fellow CTE teachers at Edison, who, even though we each have a different area of expertise, have shown me what it means to be part of a supportive and collaborative team. And I will miss them. I will miss teaching alongside my partner, Carrie Sakura, and miss working with Hector Morales, who is truly the best resource teacher ever, and my other members of that teaching staff. And I hope they know that now that I'm stepping out of the classroom to take a seat on the Board table, I bring with me what I have learned as a teacher and the perspective of a classroom teacher when it comes to making sure the Board and the school system is keeping the work that teachers do and the value that we bring front and center in all decision-making. And then there are those who have inspired me, fellow leaders from whom I have learned so much, such a laundry list, Cynthia Simonson, Tracy Potts, Gillian Hubner, Laura Stewart, Matt Swibel, Neil Oringer, Cheryl Pierce, Oriol Saw, Erin Clegg, James Modric, Tammy Fox, Christy Kartzakalas, Kelly Schooler Reynolds, Kacha Marin, Lisa Klein, Michelle Gluck, Mark Epstein, just a sampling of those who made my time on the MCCPTA Executive Committee and my time as president of MCCPTA, an honor and a privilege. They have brought their wisdom and their energy and their expertise to the table as volunteers, and they have so greatly enriched the school system. I will never underestimate their value, and I will be in constant communication with them to keep me grounded and centered and fully informed as I embark on the work of serving the system at the Board table. And then the students that have inspired me. Students like Zoe Chishiaev, the student members of the Board, Eric Gersi, Matt Post, Ananya Tadakonda, Nate Tenbite, student leaders in our local schools like Brian Sorto, Luca Utruloga, Saris Day, Simon Bissai, Claire Galillo, Avery Smedley, Jessie Wakachea, Helena Etanfisu, Olivia Japong, all the student journalists that work in the school system doing Pulitzer-quality work every day. You all are the moral compass of the school system. You all are doing amazing work, pointing us in the direction that we need to go. I need to, I commit to you to bring the wisdom and your lived experience to the Board table with me in every decision that I am part of and every problem-solving conversation that I have, because I know without you and without the wisdom of our communities and without the wisdom of our teachers, we cannot make the best decisions that we can.
I am here today to say thank you, thank you. Thank you for casting your vote to reelect me to serve yet another term on the Montgomery County Board of Education. I am so honored and truly humbled, and I'm looking forward to continuing to do this work. Congratulations to my colleague Rebecca Smandrowski for running your reelection. Looking forward to continuing to do this work with you. To Ms. Harris, I say welcome and congratulations to you. You and I are no strangers. We had the distinct honor of working together on the Montgomery County Council of PTAs. So I know your work ethic, I know your collaborative spirit. I know we'll do well on the Board together. So just looking forward to getting started doing this work with you. To Ms. Dixon, this is my opportunity to say one last chance of fond farewell to you. I recently was, you know, thinking about what I wanted to say to you yet another time publicly, and I recently got some information about, you know, after we are no longer living, there are things sometimes that people wish that they had been able to do. So I'm just going to read this to you, but I wanted to flip it around to say, this is some of the things that I hope you're able to do as you continue to live your life to the fullest. So some have regrets that they wish they had the courage to live a life true to themselves, not the life others expected of them. You were always true to yourself. Some wish they hadn't worked so hard. My wish for you is that you're able to sit down and enjoy your life in this next phase in your journey. Some wish that they had had the courage to express their feelings. You were always true to yourself in expressing your feelings in public and private. And so I really appreciate that about you. Some wish that they had stayed in touch with your friends. There are many conversations, I know that you did that, but I hope that you're able to do that even more now that you have more time, that you're able to spend time with your family. And some wish that they had had the opportunity to be happier. And so I'll say to you, just simply be happy. This is your time to relax and enjoy life. You've given over 30 years of your service to Montgomery County Public Schools. You've served four years on the Montgomery County Board of Education. You have lived your life out loud. You have dreamed big, and the sky was never the limit for you. So I really appreciate that about you. I enjoyed working with you, and I just wish you well in this next phase.
Hello, this is very different having to do this recorded. It's hard to make comments and things like that when you're not talking to somebody face-to-face, but this is the world that we're in now. So I want to start off by offering Ms. Lynn Harris, Ms. Lynn Harris, congratulations and say welcome to the Board. Your dedication and your commitment to our schools and our students has always been clear. And I just want you to know that I really look forward to working together with you in the next coming years, in the upcoming years. Thank you for running, and it's going to be a lot of work, but it's very rewarding work, and so I'm glad you're here. Ms. Evans, I want to say congratulations to you as well, and welcome back. And then last but not least, certainly, Ms. Jeanette Dixon. I want to start off by saying thank you for your service. Change is always hard for me, and I'm not a huge fan of goodbyes, but I hope that you know how much I will miss you. You are someone who is afraid of nothing. Your passion, your dedication, and ability to put everything out there and on the table has been inspiring. You say it like it is and are never afraid to speak your truth, and I find that incredible. I was out shopping one day and saw this towel and read it and thought about you and decided I needed to get it for you. And you know, it reads, "People say I sometimes act like I don't care. I'm not acting." And I just feel like that is very representative of the way you, you just put it out there. And I'm inspired by that, as I've said. You've been an incredibly consequential board member and a role model and mentor to me. Montgomery County Public Schools students and staff are better because of your service. I know I'm better because of your service and the work of the Board and the way that we do our work is better because of your service. So thank you, thank you for that and sharing yourself with all of us in that. I believe that you've been the voice that helps us grow, and I'm honored to have been able to work with you and learn from you. I know that you will I know that you will stay involved, and I hope, of course, that you will stay in touch. You've been someone who's always the first person that I think of when I feel like I need to talk something through in this work that we do. And I'm very grateful for the amount of time that you've taken to hear me and talk to me about things and work through things with me, as I'm sure you do with everyone. I will miss that, although I may still continue to call you on these, some of these issues going forward. So I'm not sure what the next chapter in your book of life has coming, but I know that it's going to be great, and I hope you'll get some rest and do some traveling and stay in touch and be well. And thank you for everything.
To Ms. Dixon, thank you so much for serving on the Board of Education. You've always been a strong ally for our students and always fought to ensure that the student voice was heard on the Board of Education. You've put the students first, and all of the students in Montgomery County appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts. And also thank you for being an ally to this mob of the past couple of years. Just talking to the previous mobs who preceded me, I know all of them told me great stories about all of the work that you got to do with all of them. So thank you for that, and I truly appreciate that. And though we didn't get to sit next to each other at the board table because of Zoom, I know that you were still there to give me advice whenever I needed it and still helped me out throughout the beginning of my term and then as my term has gone on. So even after you're no longer on the board, I'll be sure to reach out. To Mrs. Evans and Mrs. Smandrowski, congratulations on your reelection. I've had so much fun working with you guys thus far, and I'm excited to continue to do that work with you guys. And to Lynn Harris, congratulations on your election. I look forward to no longer being the least senior member on the board and also look forward to working with you over the next couple of months as you push for all of the policies that I know you're passionate about and all of the policies that you'd like to see the board tackle.
Hi, I'm Judy Daca. I represent District One, and I'm so happy to be here to say thank you to Jeanette and to welcome aboard the new persons, Lynn Harris. It's going to be such an asset to us. She's got such a strong background. Her work with MCC PTA has really put us in touch with parents. But in addition to that, she's a lawyer, a nurse, and a teacher. She was a teacher at Edison, so she's had her finger on the pulse of the students. And she has really worked with our career and technology programs because we are trying to let people know how wonderful they are and how much students can learn there. I also want to welcome back Rebecca. Rebecca has done a phenomenal job with her committee on social, emotional issues, the Special Populations Committee. She works outside of the board on committees that have to do with helping students and parents to have a better outlook on education and on living, actually. And she's very enthusiastic, very giving, very generous, and she's welcome back. And I also want to welcome back Shebra. Shebra has done a fantastic job of trying to corral all of us and keep us in order and make sure that we get all the materials that we need and that everybody has the chance to weigh in on decisions. I think she's done a super job for the last two years. It is hard work. She has had to go to a number of meetings that we never had to go to in order to be in touch with the state, the county government, and with our school system. In addition to that, she has presented at the Maryland Association of Boards of Education for two years in a row, last year and this year. This year, she teamed again with Pat O'Neill, and they talked about newer board members and experienced board members and the differences or the similarities that they have. And I really also want to say farewell to Jeanette. Jeanette has really brought some new ideas to us. One of the things that she's really focused on or has been focused on, of course, is reading. We all know that third grade reading, and without third grade reading for our students, if they can't do that, they are not able to do any of the other course as well. So that's very serious. And she also has been our financial wizard. She's always checking on us to make sure that we're looking at how much things cost and is there a better way to do it. As the chair of the financial committee, finance committee, she looked at the CDs and the interest that we were getting on CDs. And this is just one example of the kinds of things that she is able to figure out. And staff took it back, and they indeed did find a way to do a better job of getting interest on our CDs. Also, she was very insistent that we go to the state capitol. As all of you know, Maryland's state capitol, Annapolis, is the oldest continuously-used state capitol in this country. So she made sure that people knew about it and that they visited the capitol, which many of them had not done. She also worries about us with history. She made sure all of us had this first stamp for the celebration of 100-year for women having the vote. And I hope you can see this. She gave this to each one of us on the board. And this is not the first time she's given us articles or books, but this one is on Josiah Henson, which is really very important because Josiah Henson has a local reputation. They are opening a park to Josiah Henson on Old Georgetown Road, and he was the manager of a plantation for the Riley family. He has a really interesting background, and we just appreciate all the things that she's brought to us. So thank you all. Congratulations to Lynn and Shebra and Rebecca and Jeanette. We will miss you.
Jeanette, I want to thank you for your service and your dedication to our students and staff and for your unwavering commitment to equity. Like myself, I consider you one of my equity warriors. Yes, we've had our differences, but I always knew that your heart was in the right place. So I know this is not goodbye. I know that we will see you as you continue to advocate for the students in our system. And please, call me anytime. I'm always available to have a conversation with you. Lynn, welcome. You're joining us at a crucial time for public education. As you are aware, the challenges we face are complex. I know your concern for all students. I know where your heart is. I know as we move forward, there may be times when we differ, but please feel free to call me or reach out anytime. I'm sure you will be able to contribute. I'm looking forward to hearing some of your innovative ideas. I look forward to working with you, and please, as I said, if you have any questions or concerns, never hesitate to reach out. And to Shebra and Rebecca, welcome back. I look forward to our continued commitment to the students in MCPS and moving the system forward.
Hello, everyone. We're here today to welcome a new board member and to say goodbye to another. I'd like to start with Jeanette Dixon. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Jeanette, for your years of service on the board. I enjoyed getting to know you and working with you. I valued your opinion because of your experience as a teacher and an educator in MCPS. You've left us with a charge to be laser-focused on third-grade reading, and I agree with that 100%. And finally, on a personal note, I enjoyed hearing about your family. You're very impressed gardening and all the history tidbits that you shared with us throughout the years. Being on the board is a huge time commitment, and so you are going to have a lot of free time now to enjoy your many hobbies and interests. Thank you for your service and enjoy your second retirement. To Lynn Harris, welcome. We welcome you to the board. I look forward to working with you. I think that your experience is incredible, and it's going to be a great asset to the board. You've been a nurse, a lawyer, a teacher. Of course, you're a parent of an MCPS student and a former PTA president. So it's going to be a great asset to the board, and I look forward to working with you. I like your focus on student involvement, engagement in all the decisions that we make. So I also look forward to working with you on that. Just welcome. We're here to serve together. And just a phone call away if you need me, and so look forward to working with you and to getting to know you better. And finally, to congratulate my colleagues, Shebra Evans and Rebecca Smandrowski, for their reelection. You get to continue to make this board strong and in service of our students and staff and community. Thanks to everyone. Look forward to another term of service.
This is the time that every two years, we have a transition of adult elected Board of Education members. It's a bittersweet time. We say congratulations to the newly-elected board member. We say farewell to departing board member, and we say welcome back to our returning colleagues. So first, I want to say congratulations to Lynn Harris. I know that you campaigned hard to get here. We are familiar with each other, you having served in MCC PTA for a long time. We say farewell to Jeanette Dixon. I know that the four years seem to go fast. I thank you for those four years, but really, we must thank you for your previous 30 years of service to the children of Montgomery County. To Shebra and Rebecca, I welcome you back, and I offer my hearty congratulations on your reelection to the Board of Education. We are the publicly-elected, democratically-elected voice of the people serving all children in Montgomery County. And I know that this past eight months has been one unlike any of my previous 22 years on the Board of Education. You don't run for the board to become rich or famous, and you know that you will not always please everybody. I urge you guys to keep a journal because it's unlike any other time in history. And I congratulate you. I look forward to the journey that we will continue with Shebra and Lynn and Rebecca and my other colleagues on the board. I hope that everyone has a happy holiday season, and I look forward to all of us rolling up our sleeves and continuing our work. And I wish Ms. Dixon well. Thank you.